This is the May 12, 2021 meeting of the Kuchnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda today is the secretary's minutes from April 14.
If I can just make a comment, you'll notice I did make an edit to these only because I wanted to clarify that the bills are always sent to Town Hall. It just happens that for some reason, they now pass three months because I don't have May's bill either, aren't coming to the library. I don't know where they're going, so I haven't been able to get my hands on days yet either. So I wanted to just clarify, they've always been sent to Town Hall. I just would always get them in my mailbox, and I haven't been. And the other piece was that I did scratch, the issue has been resolved just because I wasn't sure if it had been, and it clearly hasn't been because I don't have May's. So I'll be trying to track that down over the next couple of days. And I'm sure it'll all work out just fine as it did the last time. But that's why you're seeing that, I just made those changes.
Other than those changes, does anyone have anything else? Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the secretary's report.
All in favor? Let's raise a hand just so that we can, for the sake of the mask, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is old business and update on browsing by appointment.
Budget first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the budget. Budget first.
So what I'm giving you today is an up-to-date budget, so it's exactly where we stand right now. The only significant change on the salary line, other than the bi-weekly pay, is that the longevity line is now spent out for this fiscal year. So the three staff members who are getting longevity this year have now reached the markers to get the longevity payments. Otherwise, I think we're right on track with the rest of the lines. As far as operating, you'll see that energy is the same as it was when we were last together because I haven't received any additional ever-source bills yet. And everything else, that's the only note I had. I think everything else is right where it's supposed to be. You know, it is showing that we're 95% spent out in operating, but we do still have about $2,400, and I am going to be talking with you today later on about a transfer that would boost that a little bit. So again, I think we're at a total of 85.5% spent out for the fiscal year. I think we're good for mid-May. So unless anyone has any questions.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Okay. Motion?
Motion to accept the budget.
All in favor? Aye. Now we'll move on to the old business of browsing by appointment.
Thank you. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. So as you know, our takeout's been going strong since last June, and we did introduce browsing by appointment at the end of March. That's when we just, we did it very quietly for two weeks at the end of March. So since March 20, about two weeks, since March 24th, when we started, we've had, oh, that's great, I didn't do the grand total. Hello! Well, let me just do some quick math. We've had 292 people come in. Is that correct? Yes, 292 people come in since March 24th to browse. And I think that's been going really well. People are here, they can be here for a maximum of 45 minutes, as you know, but most people are in and out in 10 to 15 minutes. We find that people who have children are staying a bit longer, and that was how it was pre-COVID, because they're actually browsing and spending some time looking around. But we are seeing, for the most part, the adults who are coming in, unless it's to use the computer, they're going right where they know they want to be, they're grabbing what they want, and they're leaving. So they are doing the grab-and-go model that we were hoping would happen. And the families are doing that as well. We're very happy to have the families stay in longer and do their full browsing, and that's great. But I think everything's going really smoothly. The staff is very happy with how things are going. We do still have a lot of people taking advantage of takeout so far this month. Let me just flip back to my notes. We've had 210 people at the window just in the month of May so far, so since May 1st to May 12, we've, actually not including today, that's through yesterday, we've had 210 at the window. So that service, I think, is still very popular with a lot of people, but we are happy to see that browsing is picking up interest too. I'm hopeful that the next time we meet, we'll be talking about eliminating appointments and just having people come in. The appointments are great because it helps us control the amount of people in the building at a time. However, the appointment making is very tedious for both the staff and for the public who want to come in. So it would be great if we can get to a point where we're just opening the doors and hoping we can just do a very accurate count that controls the number of people coming in. So that's my update. So again, unless anyone has any questions, that's where we're at for browsing and takeout.
I don't know, does anybody have any questions right now? New business, increasing the vacant library tech one position from eight hours to 12 hours?
Yes. So I call it an eight-hour position, but that position has always been budgeted for nine and a half hours a week. And the reason why is because one week a month, the position works a Saturday shift. So one week a month, they work 14 hours instead of eight. So the average is nine and a half hours a week. So what I'm hoping to do in all actualities is go from a nine and a half hour position to a 12-hour position. I know that's only two and a half hours, but that would be a critical difference because that would allow for someone to be here three days every week for a four-hour shift. We already have a tech one that does 12-hour shift, 12 hours per week, three shifts a week. And so the position already exists. It's not like we're trying to create a new position. I just want to up one position from nine and a half to 12 hours. We have the money in the budget, so we don't need to ask for additional money. The reason why we do is because when we prepared the budget, we had someone in a tech two position who has since left and was at the maximum for the tech two position for hourly. So with them gone and the new person coming in to fill that tech two position, they're making about $2 an hour less than the person who was originally in the position. So that's allowed for some wiggle room within our budget. And so going from nine and a half to 12 hours is a difference of $43 a week for an annual difference of about $2,200. So we do have the money to do this. And so to keep with all of you, the town administrator has approved it. It doesn't need to go to the union because the position already exists, but it does need to go to you all to say whether or not you're okay with that happening. And I think especially as we move forward with eliminating appointments and we're coming up to summer reading, it would be, I know it doesn't sound like much, but it would be huge for our staffing levels if we had someone here every week. So hopefully, you agree. And again, there's no impact. We will still have about $1,300 in the library technician line, and that will allow for coverage when someone calls out sick or is on vacation, or if we ever get to have an in-person staff meeting again, that will certainly help. So there is still going to be wiggle room in that tech line. This won't deplete the technician line for FY '22. And that's the plan, is that the person would come on in FY '22 because, as you know, I'm going to be taking vacation. I'm not back till the first week of June. I'd have to advertise the position, and I don't think it's fair to anybody, especially people over at Town Hall, to bring in a new staff member at the tail end of the fiscal year. I think it would just be easier to have whoever's coming in hopefully be able to start that first full week of July. So this is an FY '22 request.
I agree.
That sounds good.
Yep.
All right, let's, does anybody have any questions or anything about it, comments? If not, we'll take, we need a motion, and we'll take a vote.
I'll make a motion to increase the tech one position to 12 hours per week.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the departmental transfer from salary to operating line within the budget.
So this is the time of year, May, and then June, when we are allowed to do an interdepartmental transfer if we have an overage in either salary or operating. We do have the overage in salary because we've had a vacant position this fiscal year. So we are going to end FY '21 with approximately $6,000 left in the library technician line. And I'm asking that you approve the transfer of up to $2,000 from salary to operating to cover any additional expenses in operating this fiscal year. I know for sure we're going to, between the next two ever-source bills and our last water bill for the town, we will max out the energy line. And as you know, we've already maxed out some of our other lines. And there are some additional materials expenses that I would like to pay for through our budget versus state aid if possible. So what I'm asking for is that you approve a transfer of up to $2,000 to cover any overages for the operating line. And I mean, I think in other years, we would maybe be able to go a little higher, but the town has asked that everyone be conservative in their needs and not that we just go spend the money because it's there, and that the rest of the overage will be turned over to the general fund, so it does go back to the town. And I think this year in particular, you know, we would like to be conservative. Otherwise, I'd probably just ask that you let the transfer of the whole $6,000 go.
Right.
But for this year, I think $2,000 is very fair, and we may not even hit an overage of $2,000, but if we do, I won't have to come back to you and ask for another transfer.
That sounds good. It makes sense. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right. Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Departmental transfer from salary to the operating side.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The last new business is the addition of a pavilion on the library's back lawn.
Yes, so this has been something, and some of you will remember this, this has been talked about for a really long time now, that we build something on the back lawn. We've done a lot of programs, as you know, on the back lawn through the years. But it would be wonderful to have a covered space out there, and then something that would protect from both the sun and like a light rain. There's a lot we could do under there, including when we can bring back our popular summer concert series. We could do storytimes under that. There could be perhaps like exercise classes. There's a lot that could be done with a pavilion out there because during the day, it's hard to do programs out there because the sun is beating down on you in the summertime. And when we're doing the concerts, if it starts to rain, everybody bolts for their cars. So a pavilion would be, I think, a very good long-term investment. We've talked about, the friends have talked about it many times, and I've been in friends' meetings where it's been discussed. We've talked about it with previous town administrators, and our current town administrator, Ms. Hebert, thinks it would be a great use of CARES funds that the town has, so it would come at no cost in the library. It would be done most likely by our building department, so they would be doing the work in-house. They did something similar over at the Council on Aging last year around the same time that they built the pergola on our deck. So I think it'll really work well. Unfortunately, I don't have much more information other than that. It's very much in the early stages. I just wanted to make you all aware that it's being discussed, and if you had any initial concerns or questions about it, that this would be a good time to talk about that. And I think I also just want your approval that we could move forward with anything if the opportunity presents itself very quickly, in other words. But again, it would be using funds that the town already has, it would come at no additional cost to the library, or to the friends group, or to taxpayers, and I think it would be a really great use to build up that space.
Do you have any idea what the size would be at this time, at this point, are you talking like most of the back lawn?
No, we're talking the, most likely, the south corner. So that's, you know, our right, and so near the, when you first drive in, you'd see it, in other words, when you drive into the parking lot, you would see it. We're talking about doing it there. That's a safe distance from the septic system also, so it would be a safe area to place it. And I don't even think it would stretch halfway through the back lawn. There would still be a lot of open space and, you know, a lot of room. We're thinking something that you could fit, you know, maybe 40 people under. Potentially, there would be a stage in that area too, a small stage for any performers that we were having.
Like a little, like a step up?
A raised, a raised, right, exactly, yeah, not a full-on stage, but yes, a raised, a raised platform within. It would also have electricity. There is still a lot of talk about solar panels. The building department applied, some of you might remember quite a few years ago now, for a grant for solar panels. And by putting it on that side of the property, it would also benefit from solar panels. So, but in terms of exact size, we haven't gotten to that yet. I'm just thinking it'd be something, not a huge, not a huge structure, but large enough that we could hold, you know, a fairly large program under it. But if we had an overflow of people in attendance, there would be plenty of lawn for those people. And there would still be plenty of lawn for all the running that happens back there in the next month. With, you know, when we do programs and there's a lot of, you know, kids just running around back there, we would still have space for them. It wouldn't just be the structure.
Okay, that sounds good. I was just trying to get a 10 of a figure.
Sure.
So what?
Probably the same size as like the Town Hall.
I think that, or what they put at the Council on Aging, behind the Council on Aging, I think that's their idea, something along that size.
I think they did a great job with the pavilion behind the Council on Aging, and they do a lot of programming with it.
They do.
So, I mean, it sounds like a wonderful idea. Would be a great addition, I think.
I think so too, yeah. I think, the setup at the Council on Aging is also great because they even have like a heat source out there. They have those, yeah, they have, like, but you see it right, those, the cone-shaped, not fire pits, but that's, you know, I'm sure there's a, oh my gosh. Man, COVID brain is a real thing, wasn't it? Those propane tanks, I'm sure like it's powered by something like propane or something, but not a regular fire pit. But it looks very nice, but it also provides a heat source. So I mean, I don't know if we'd get into something that elaborate here, but it would be nice if that were a possibility so that we could take programming into the fall and early spring, that kind of thing. But I think if there's a size that, like a cap-on size that you want to talk about, we could certainly, I mean, I can let them know that we don't, I mean, I don't want it to take up the whole back lawn. I'm thinking that's what, we have a beautiful.
Right, that was my thought.
We have a beautiful outdoor space here.
Right.
I mean, people comment on that all the time, what a peaceful outdoor space it is. So I don't want to put up something that would take away from that.
Right.
But would rather enhance the space and then still allow for open space.
Right.
On this, on the north side.
I think the space for 40 people is a good, you know, it's a good size. I don't want people to be too big or too small.
Okay.
I mean, you don't want to build something that can only fit 10 people, because then what's the point of building?
Right.
You know, but I think that would be, that would be good.
Great.
Absolutely. And it'll be open, I assume. It'll just have the top, and it'll be open.
Yes.
So you don't want to be under the pavilion. You could still be and still see everything that happens.
Exactly. Still have access to everything. Go to hear everything, see everything. Yep. I think that's good. Great.
So is the plan to, you want us to vote on going, moving forward, but as you'll keep us updated as things progress?
Yes, and I'm sure we'll meet again before anything starts to hap, I don't think anything's going to happen in the next few weeks. So I'm sure we'll be meeting again before anything actually happens.
Okay.
I just wanted to be able to let the building department and the town administrator know that you were good with something happening and the discussion, you know, taking place. And I also just didn't want it to blindside you when I, you know, come, hey, next week they want to come and erect this. What do you think? So I, you know, more, I don't even know, I mean, you could certainly vote on it. I don't even know that you need to, since we don't have any like firm details, but if you want, if someone wanted to make a motion to move forward, I mean, that can't hurt, you know?
I think we should.
Okay.
Only because we are talking, and then if something ends up happening and we didn't vote on it, I don't think that's a good position to be in.
Sure.
So I think we probably should, if everyone's okay with that. Maybe somebody needs to make a motion.
I make a motion to move forward, to allow Deana to be voted with plans for a type of a pavilion on the back lawn.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I really would love to see this happen because we've been talking about it for six years or so. I'd love to see it happen.
Next on the agenda is the director's report.
Yes. Okay. I could read my handwriting. Let's, okay. So I provided you with the statistics when you came in today, and I mentioned in my report that our statistics did drop for circulation a little bit from March to April. However, it was, it was very minute, only by 22 items. So I think even though we had less people coming to the window for pickups in April, that goes to show that with the browsing by appointment, we were still circulating just about the same. I mean, 22 items is really, that's one family that didn't come. One family. So again, like I said in the beginning, I think, you know, people are still happily enjoying these services, and I would say that we're pretty steady in the amount that we have going out. I did want to compare, because when you're seeing on the statistics report, the comparison from April 2020 to April 2021, there's of course no comparison really. We were only circulating digital material in April 2020. The library building was completely shut aside from some staff coming in occasionally. So it was only e-content in April of 2020. And so the jump from April 2020 to April 2021 is very impressive. However, I did want to compare it to some prior years just to see how that number compares. And the April 2021 number is actually higher than the April 2015 number. Now, in April 2015, we were still at the old building, and circulation was fairly low with the old building. I mean, our, our numbers rose astronomically when we moved here. So, but I was happy to see that we're at least doing better than we were back in 2015 at the old building, by about 600 items. So that was, that was nice to see, nice to see. Actually closer to, closer to 700 items. But when you compare to, say, April 2019, we're still circulating about half of what we were circulating pre-COVID. So I think our focus, as things continue to return to normal, will really be to get these doors open and get people, you know, able to come in with more hours than we allow for now. We had to cut the hours, as you know, because of the fact that we lost a staff member right before we were about to reopen. So I think once we're at full staff and we can just open the doors, I think we're going to quickly see our numbers increase. So I just wanted to point that out because I am such a numbers person in terms of statistics, but I have a lot of faith that that will increase as, as we return to normal, or closer to normal. And I also wanted to mention, it's not on this report, so I just got the go-ahead today, but the library will be closed on Saturday, June 19th, for Juneteenth. That's a holiday that was approved by the governor last year and as a state holiday. And so that has gotten approval from the unions to be added in, even though it's not in the original contract, but the contract does read that any new holiday declared by the governor is a holiday. So we will be closed June 19th for Juneteenth. And we will also be closed, just as a reminder for Memorial Day on May 31st. So we do have two more holidays coming up this fiscal year. And I will certainly send out a reminder about that, and we do post announcements for patrons to see that as well. We usually include it in these letters, so patrons will know. And finally, something else that's not listed here, but that I wanted to ask. And this, past practice has been that if a staff member wants to use something that belongs to the library for their own personal use, that it comes to the board, and the board can approve the use of a library-owned item for personal use. We used to have a really nice set of chairs at the old building, and people would ask to borrow the chairs for holidays. They were really nice folding chairs. And those were sold, I believe, by the friends when we relocated. So we, we don't have the chairs anymore, so no one, no one asks to borrow these. But there is a chance that I will need to borrow a six-foot table, so I would like to ask the board, I don't know for sure if I'm going to need it, but if the option is there, I would just like the board's approval for me to borrow a six-foot table that I will just borrow for a short amount of time and then return to the library. We're not used, we have six six-foot tables. We're only using two of them at the moment, and the other four are just collecting dust. So I'm not, I will, certainly I'm not taking away from the library using it, just so, just so you have that information. But if possible, and I will keep you posted on whether or not I actually take it, if it's okay.
I think it's, I don't think we need to vote on that or anything. I think we can just, does anybody have any objections?
No.
Okay. No objections.
Thank you.
Are you okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's about all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me. I'm just quickly checking, but I think I mentioned everything. Oh, there was one other thing I wanted to mention. We're still, we've been handing out those craft kits at the window, you know, all through COVID, as you know. So we're now, we're about, right at about 1,650 kits handed out.
Wow.
Yeah, so, which is great. And I don't know if I mentioned, but we did receive, I can't remember if I mentioned this at another meeting, so forgive me if I did, but it's worth repeating. We did receive a very generous donation from a resident of additional supplies to enhance these crafts. So some months since, we've been able to do two crafts instead of one. Most of the kit material is things we already had on hand or that the friends have purchased for us. But this donation from a resident really was a huge help, and it's going to help us in the summer as well to continue these kits. Because now that we've started the kits and they're so popular, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to stop them anytime soon. And I don't think we want to stop them anytime soon either. But I just really, I don't want to, you know, point her out on camera, but she knows how much we appreciate the fact that she made this donation, and it was such a wonderful surprise and greatly appreciated, and there are many children who are benefiting from her generosity. So I just want to put a thank you out for that donation. So I just want to put a thank you out for that donation. And that, that is really it now.
Are you sure?
Yep, that's it.
Does anyone have anything else to add? We will be going into executive session after this meeting. We will not be returning to open meeting. So I believe I need a motion to go into, to end this meeting and to go into executive session.
Do we need to set the date for...
Oh, yes. We should probably do that too. Do you want to set the date?
Right. I did write a few options down, so we can undo that. So I wasn't thinking of that, but...
Nancy was thinking of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I thought perhaps Tuesday, June 15th at 12:00 PM or 5:00 PM. Or another option is Wednesday, June 16th, again at 12:00 PM or 5:00 PM.
Does either day work better for anybody else?
The 16th is the last day of school, I think.
16th is the last day of school, and it's a half a day.
Oh, well, it's made up.
Does the 15th work?
The 15th works for me.
Does noon work for everyone, or is it better at 5:00?
I have an appointment at noon.
You have an appointment at noon? Okay, is 5:00 okay? Does 5:00 work for everyone else?
Yep.
Okay, so Tuesday, June 15th at 5:00, here in this children's room.
If you're good with this, then yes, we'll meet right here in this children's.
Does that work for everyone? Okay.
Great.
Next meeting will be Tuesday, June 15th at 5:00 o'clock here at the library.
Great.
Okay. Now, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting and to go into executive session, not to return.
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting, go into executive session, and not return.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This May 12th, 2021, meeting of the Acushnet Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, and we will go into executive session. Thank you.